Hi Kathy, hi Tim. Hi Shandel, if you can hear me.
Hi Mike, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna mute it for a few minutes until the meeting starts.
Yes.
Hello everyone.
Hey.
Hello.
Hello.
Mr. Owen, can you hear me?
I can.
Just give me one more second, I just realized I left my printout on the printer and then I'll be right out.
Let's just check, Mr. Johnson, are you good? Can you hear us? Maybe not. Ashley, what about you?
Yeah, I hear you fine.
Okay, Dale? Can you hear us all right? All right, Clint? Okay, Daniel, can you hear us all right?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Kathy, I think I already heard you.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Tim, I see, it said connected to audio, can you hear us now? You're muted though.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, all right, good, gotcha. All right. Mr. Womack, you got all your stuff off the printer?
I did, just trying to mark off who is present.
All right, well, let's, we'll get into the roll call so we can do that, so let's call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. I have a flag behind me, I'll move to the side, so hopefully you can see it back over there and we can do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. A roll call, Mr. Bray.
Here.
This is Bremer.
Here.
Mr. Conley. I think I got him there, okay, Mr. Hall.
Mr. Hall was dealing with some family medical issues today.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Nixon. Any word on him, Mr. Womack?
I have not heard from him though.
All right, so Mark Kim is absent as well, Harrison Owens.
Here.
Mr. Watson.
Here.
Craig Owens is here, all right, so I know for our city officials, I see Mr. Womack, Mr. Johnson, I believe Ms. Napparowski is there. Anybody else that can help me out with that might be there?
Ms. Powell is in the council chamber with Ms. Napparowski.
Okay. All right, if we could turn our attention to the minutes from our August 11th, 2020.
Mr. Peace is here as well.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Mr. Peace is here as well.
Okay. So if we could turn our attention to the August 11th, 2020 minutes. Hope you had a chance to look at that, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve.
Support for that?
Second.
All right. Anybody see anything on those minutes that needed to be adjusted? Okay, all in favor of approving the August 11th, 2020 minutes as they've been presented to us, I.
I. I.
All opposed, no. Okay, motion carries, thank you. I will make the motion that we approve our agenda that has been presented to us this evening.
Second.
Anybody see anything on the agenda, if you have a question on or we need to adjust at all? Okay, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, I.
I. I.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you. All right, public comment, so let's do this first, let's just start with anybody that's in the council chambers. Ms. Napparowski, since you're in that room, is there anybody there that would like to address the planning commission?
My first question is to ask who motioned it and seconded.
On which part?
The second part.
The approval of the agenda?
Yes.
I motioned that.
I believe Kathy Bremer seconded.
I believe so. Okay. So is there anybody in the council chambers that would like to make a public comment?
No. They're just here out of curiosity.
Okay. All right, so then, Mr. Womack, since you have kind of the list up there, I'll let you go through the people that are online to see if there's anybody on the Zoom meeting that would like to make a public comment, you could address them by name and see if anybody has a comment.
Sure, okay, and I do have, I think, five letters to read at the end when everybody else is done.
Okay.
So here. I have somebody by the name of Dave Chop. Mr. Chop, if you have a public comment, I would ask that you make it now. Mr. Chop, if you can hear us, I've asked you to unmute yourself to make a public comment if you'd like.
I'm good, no thanks.
Thank you. I have C and Wright, I believe Mr. Enright works for Loom Cannabis, Mr. Enright, you are a member of the public, would you like to make a comment?
I reserve my comments until our item is being heard, thank you very much.
Sure. See, Haley Jonah, Ms. Jonah, would you like to make a public comment?
Not at this time, thank you.
John Abbo, Mr. Abbo, would you like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
I have Race Ray, is that Ms. Renee Race, Ms. Renee Race, would you like to make a public comment?
Not at this time, thanks.
I have somebody by the name of Ross, R-O-S-S, would Ross like to make a public comment at this time? I didn't hear anything, Ross, would you like to make a public comment?
No comment at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Hendrick, Andrea Hendrick, would you like to make a public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
Greg, would Greg like to make a public comment at this time?
No, we're all set for now.
I have someone, I think by the name of Brian, would Brian like to make a public comment?
No, thank you.
Unfortunately, due to the nature of how these things line up, they keep moving on me, but I think I've got everybody, if there's anybody that I did not call on that would like to make a public comment, would you please do so at this time and identify yourself? Okay, so I do have a couple of letters I would like to read, of course, we've been asking members of the public that if they're unable or unwilling to attend the meetings to please send City Hall a letter, email, whatever, and that I would have that read at the public hearing, so these are not my comments, these are comments of members of the public. The first one is August 27th, 2020, Dear City Manager, Mr. Mike Womack, and respective CS Planning Commission members, I ask that this letter would please be read aloud during the public forum portion of the Planning Commission meeting dated September 1st, 2020. Regarding the idea of an adult standalone recreational marijuana retail business coming here to Cedar Springs is upsetting to me. I have been so glad for the friendly, family-oriented details that have been sprung, that have begun to spring up here in my sweet hometown. The Kent Theater is a jewel that has yet to receive its full recognition for the value it gives our community, young and old alike do enjoy what this theater offers. According to the CS Post, Loom Cannabis Co., headquartered in Troy, has 10 marijuana businesses already in Michigan and one is as close as Big Rapids. And to think that they plan to build their business right there beside the Kent Theater, it would be only a whiff away at 16 North Main Street where Vitaly Pizza now stands. This is a sad thought, and because of its piney, skunk-like smell, will our town regulate where it will be allowed to be smoked? Rockford had the tannery for years, will we become known for the stench of this weed? How might it change our town's character? How will it draw, who will it draw to our streets? After all, it is a psychoactive, mind-altering drug. I want to be able to continue to embrace our town's future, I was hoping we were blossoming into something better. Are some looking to marijuana as a magic potion to raise our city's dough? If so, consider that we do have a nice bakery in town, now there is a nice smell that we can all enjoy. Personally, I think the whole idea of marijuana being made legal and sold here in Cedar Springs stinks. I hope and pray that comes, that what comes out of Troy, Michigan to Cedar Springs does not turn out to be a Trojan horse that will do us in. There are better things our town needs than weeds. Thank you for your time, respectfully, Ms. Sharon Magoon, AD East Maple Street, Cedar Springs, Michigan, 49319. I hope she doesn't mean me, because of course I came from Troy, Michigan as well. Letter two. Please read this at your meeting on September 1st, 2020, so that all present physically or virtually may hear my request, August 28th, 2020. To the Cedar Springs Zoning Committee, this is Pastor Larry Young. My wife Audrey and I have lived in the city for over 47 years. We are so pleased to see the city improving in so many ways, making an increasingly desirable place to live. Just a second, I gotta text. Please consider allowing the sale of cannabis and marijuana for recreational use on our main street. My concern is that our downtown area, which has been steadily improving in recent years, will deteriorate, as some residents will no longer trust going downtown. The only value I see in allowing marijuana is medicinal. If the hallucinogenic and euphoric properties are removed from this weed, it could be safely sold through local pharmacies. Thank you for allowing my input. Thank you for allowing my input, Pastor Larry Young. Signed. Please read this. This is letter three. Please read this aloud at your meeting on September first, twenty twenty, so that all present physically or virtually may hear my request. August twenty eighth, twenty twenty. To the zoning committee regarding the authorization of the use of Cedar Springs Downtown Building for the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana. As a longtime resident and a medically professional pharmacist, I would like for the planning committee to oppose the establishment of such business at sixteen North Main Street. This address is located in our downtown area, vital to the image of Cedar Springs. I do not see this venue as having a healthy and wholesome option to citizens and visitors. Please consider the effect that that this type of business can have on our children and families. Our storefronts and businesses have labored to give wholesome shopping and dining to our downtown. Downtown is becoming more and more delightful, appealing shopping area. Families and children are safe here. Let's continue the influence, please. Thank you for your consideration. Audrey Young, signed. Just opening up the fourth letter. Fourth letter from Lisa Brimmer Jackson. Forward, marijuana refi is for PC to read, August twenty first, twenty twenty. Uh, to Catherine Brummer at ATT dot net to be addressed to the CS Planning Commission with my permission. I live in Kentwood. I live in a good neighborhood. No crime. It's quiet. Since the marijuana legislation has passed, I've seen things that are simply appalling. I cannot tell you the time the last year that I've gone to the store and passed someone reeking of MJ. It's to the point my seven-year-old knows the smell. What seven-year-old should know the smell of MJ? It's literally everywhere. There are neighborhoods that I drive through that I know I have to keep my windows up because the smell is so strong. Sometimes it's so strong, it comes through my heat or my air conditioning. There are a couple of families that live near me that smoke so much in their backyard, often I am unable to use my patio because it's overwhelming. That's just the smell. Or it knows what it's doing to our brains. There's no hiding from it. That brings me to my next points of concern. I know many people that openly talk about their use of marijuana now that it is legal. Many of them have young children. Many of them smoke in their homes, their cars, et cetera. I've noticed a change in behavior in these children. It's not good. They are squirrely kids, can't focus, don't play well with others. I can only imagine what their teachers see as they come down from it in a safe school environment, only to go back home to it. I'm not naive to believe that drugs aren't in Cedar Springs already. Obviously, the town already has a bit of a reputation that. However, seeing the significant changes in Kentwood, twenty-third largest city in the state, I can't imagine the detriment to Cedar Springs will happen that much faster and that much worse. Kids are going to come to school smelling like it. Kids are going to come to school high from secondhand marijuana inhalation. Children are going to sneak around and get it, like many kids did when I was a teenager for cigarettes. Marijuana alters your mind. This is simply terrifying for the youth and future of our country. And let's take a second to think about the people who live in town, near where they want to put these dispensaries. There are many good people in that town that are not going to want to smell that all the time. People are going to leave. Good people are going to leave, all because of greed. I've been away from Cedar Springs for over twenty-three years. Only in the last year or so had I started coming up in utilizing some of the shops and restaurants because it was turning into a quaint little town. I assure you that I will not go up there knowing that I'm going to be walking by dispensaries. My money can go to other places. Please don't destroy one of these few small quaint towns in our wonderful state. Lisa Jackson. And one last one. Dear sir, I'm writing to express my thoughts about having a marijuana store in Cedar Springs. I understand you feel this is going to be a way to improve the real estate on Main Street. You need to fully evaluate the pros and cons of this issue. Cedar Springs already has a significant problem with illegal drugs and alcoholism. We must not add all the complications of marijuana usage to this. The added costs of increase in crime, child neglect and abuse, mental health, physical health, et cetera, et cetera, should not be equal to the advantage of improved real estate. Sorry, but all the costs need to be considered. Surely there are better ways to improve the structure on Main Street. Please read this email at the next city council meeting. Oops. Uh, sincerely, the Rainwater. And that is all I have.
All right, so that closes our public comments. Um, planning commissioners, any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications that you need to share with the body? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to our scheduled uh hearings. And I will open the public hearing for special land use of um Battle Spring LLC, doing business as three fifteen cannabis at four zero one one dash one three seventeen mile road. I know in our uh, some of the paperwork, there was a uh I think we uh missed a number in the parcel number, but in the, the public notice that went out did have the correct parcel number, but I think in some of the paperwork that was submitted to the city, they had a I believe it was twenty-four instead of the uh, the correct twenty-three, but um, it appears that the uh, the proper notice was in uh, in the paper for um the correct parcel number for that. So um, so we are um, the, the applicant is looking for a special land use approval for recreational adult-use marijuana, a retail store and processor. So um, do we have as uh, is the applicant online with us tonight?
Y- yes, uh, good evening. This is actually Thomas Napso. It comes up as Haley Jonah. I'm actually sitting here with the property owners Haley Jonah and Blake Jonah. Um, so that's why it's coming up that way. Uh, and also on our team is, we see there's Ross. Ross Bogdan is our regional manager. And you also have um Andrea Hendrick uh on our team.
Okay. So which one of you would like to uh make the floor and uh tell us a little bit about your special land use request?
If, if you don't mind, if it's possible, um Andrea will put, we have a little um, presentation that we could put up. I'll kind of lead and then hand it off to Andrea to continue the conversation, if that's fine.
I'm sorry, are you requesting the permission to share your screen?
It would be Andrea's screen. Uh, yes, Mrs. Womack.
Okay, Andrea, I'll give you permission.
All right, thank you. Um. Yeah, Andrea's. And you can go ahead and start the slideshow. Um, again, my name is Thomas Napso. On behalf of um Battle Spring LLC, three fifteen uh cannabis, uh, we are presenting uh this uh development here uh at uh off of Seventeen Mile Road. Um, this is a new development attached to an existing um uh uh center. Just want to give you a little bit of background on our company here. Um, introduce some of our team members. Andrea, you can go ahead and click the next slide. So just a little bit about us, your commitment to compliance and our current footprint. We currently operate um eleven locations. Uh, the article you see on the right there is uh, we, you made history a couple of years ago, being the, having the first uh medical marijuana retail sale in the state of Michigan. We successfully been able to transition into the adult-use market. We currently have um, again, eleven total locations, um, seven medical only, it's four in Detroit, uh, two in Grand Rapids, uh, one that opened as recently as about uh, a week ago. Uh, one in Flint, and then uh, the four adult-use locations, one in Ann Arbor, two in Battle Creek, um, and one in Maranty. So we have a history of opening uh, uh, locations of being a good neighbor and being a good uh corporate uh citizen. Andrea, next slide. Just very briefly, I mean, this is public information. We, there's a couple of, of uh, sites that provide ratings similar to a Yelp. One is called Wheat Mass, one is called Leaf Fleet. So in terms of uh, of ratings, this is very transparent information. We uh are generally very well accepted in the communities. We're in high uh customer and patient satisfaction. Just wanted to illustrate that. Andrea, you can go to the next slide. Um, a little bit more of the same there. Uh, with that, I want to hand it over to Andrea. I want to thank the city for taking the time to uh, hear us out here. And also, uh, we put a lot of time and effort and energy into this project over the last couple of weeks. So thank you to the city for uh allowing us to be agile and really uh coming up with a plan that we think makes a lot of sense and will add a lot to the city. Andrea?
Thank you, commissioners, for taking a second to look over the look. Um, application. Look through this with us. I'm trying to make it so I don't, are you, am I echoing back at you guys?
Cause you're better now.
Okay, um. We, you know, submitted this about a month ago and have been working with your planner and engineer to modify the plans, and we'd like to continue to do that with you tonight. Um, so as you know, this is um, this is a location that's um, located here in the highway commercial district. Uh, Mr. Jonah um, and Mrs. Jonah are also on the line. They have the owner, the owners of the property. Um, if you can see where my mouse is, uh, the reason that we had these parcels uh mislabeled this because there's actually two parcels that operate kind of as one, and most of them is a parking area. As your master plan indicates, this area, the highway mixed use, is um allocated for uses similar to the downtown that should include offices, neighborhood, commercial, traditional neighborhood development and residential. Um, and this will be a commercial addition to the existing site. Here's another aerial just pulled from Access Kent. We are proposing an addition here. You can see it's uh, most of, everything around it is zoned highway commercial as well. There's a couple vacant parcels directly to the north. You have a strip mall with a number of different developments, a hotel to the north. To the west, you have um, multiple drive-through restaurants, as well as another drive-through to the south. There's uh, I believe, an auto uh, or Dollar Tree to the west. So it's a primarily big box stores and other commercial development. Um, this is the section of the, of the portion that we are looking to adjust. So we are doing very minimal as far as changing the greenscape or impervious surface. We're proposing a four thousand square foot building. Um, this, we've actually um had some conversations internally, and we were going to have a five thousand, or five hundred square foot processor in addition a- as part of the four thousand square feet. And you'll see shortly when we get to the floor plans that we've adjusted this a little bit and have actually made this, um, I believe, a thousand, actually eight hundred. I'll find, find that out exactly when we get to that. But as I mentioned, we're going to be changing the green space very minimally and the um, we will add, the, the additional um building will actually help screen some of the back-of-house operations that are kind of not as pleasing in this area. You'll see that shortly. Slide. So one of the comments that um, Mr. Johnson made regarding the pa- the parking calculation is that we had um, we had incorrectly calculated the parking based on the requirements of the tractor supply. So we've adjusted the um parking requirements and the current parking. Um, there's a number of different retail spaces there that add up to the ninety-five spaces here, um, is what would actually be required for the uses that are used, plus the proposed four thousand square foot retail building that we are uh proposing. Uh, but we are not planning on adding any parking. And with the parking that's on-site, it, there's actually a hundred and eighty seat, three um, parking spaces, eight handicap spaces, and we intend on um keeping those if, if that is the desire of the planning commission. As I mentioned, we're currently overparked here. The addition of the proposed building will utilize existing on-site spaces. For the request of planning staff, we updated the parking calculation and the correct calculation will be included when we resubmit full site plans with all of the comments that, uh, that you ask us to adjust today, along with comments that Mr. Johnson has already provided. Um, this is the proposed photometric. They're somewhat complicated and you'll have it. It's, you'll be able to look at it a little bit closer, but this does comply with the um, with your recently updated lighting ordinance. We are proposing to add wall packs to the proposed building. So there'll be two wall packs on the south side of the building, two wall packs on the east side of the building, and one on the north side. The current building has a number of wall packs already on it. So if you can see where my mouse is right here, this picture is the back-of-house of the tractor supply. There's um, a little bit going on with some, some clutter in that area. Um, and we'll address that in a minute when we talk about blight, but there is existing light. So we've um included that in the photometrics. And after a conversation with your, your staff, we are going to be adding additional lighting, but we're also um only adjusting the portion of the spa- of the property that we are um actually changing. And we're leaving the existing lighting. So the picture here on the, on the bottom right is the current parking lot pole light, which is right here on the south side of, of the site. And then the existing um ADA accessible spaces, four of the eight existing ADA accessible spaces are here, obviously close to our door and closer to our neighbor's door. And um, with the combination of the existing pole lighting and our lighting, this will be properly um lit. It's, I think that your requirement is three, and it's, it's a little bit under that. It's about two point seven um foot handles. After discussion with your, your planning staff, after we received comments, we had proposed um some landscaping to the east side directly across from where we were, um, we're intending on adding an addition. And Mr. Johnson had suggested, hey, that's not really, that we're not really screening for anything because this is a hill. It may be more appropriate to move that landscaping down. Um, and you know, just add it so that people pulling in through the access drive can actually see it, and it's actually adding um some visual value to your site. So I just kind of threw this together. This is not, you know, written in stone, obviously, and we'll pass this on to our engineer. But we, after uh talking amongst ourselves, thought that Tim's idea was appropriate, and we've moved this down here. And if you're amenable to us, you know, just adjusting everything down, it, it seems like it would be um, an attractive area for some landscaping. And it would, um, the ordinance is, because of the size of the lot and the big box store, the ordinance doesn't really address um landscaping for this scale, and we'd really just like to add something that would, would add visual visually to your site. Um, yeah, this really, this is a couple of pictures that I took this, just this weekend. So this area is not um, like blighted. It's, there's a couple of things over here associated with other businesses, but it's for the most part orderly. Um, however, we do want to add um some screening to the trashcans. So if you can see the picture on the bottom right, that's the existing um dumpsters. And we would propose that if you were to just, this picture here on the bottom right is just probably right about here, right now, sitting on where the gl- the grass and the concrete meet. We'd like to shift those just upwards, so they would shift, you know, to the left in the picture here. And then we would like to add a dumpster enclosure with the appropriate um screening. Um, with regards to building elements, this is the, the floor plan, and we will, we have sent this over to your staff. This is the interior floor pan- plan indicating that the processing would be located- This is the interior floor plan indicating that the processing would be located on the north side of the building. I'm trying to do the, the math quick. I don't know if you guys can quick shout out if you know what we decided on as far as the actual square footage of the processing.
It's, it's basically 3,000, 1,000. It's just under square feet there. Yeah.
Okay. So we are, we are proposing to change that a little bit from the original design from a 500 to 1,000 square feet just because of, you know, the practical nature of, of how this would work. And it does, you know, include, you know, some of the bathrooms and such. But the way that this facility would work is that a patient would, would enter the building on the northeast side, would be checked in here. I'm sorry. They would enter the building on the southeast side. They would check in with a receptionist. They would get their ID. They would, they would get their ID taken and they would put that into a system monitored by the state so that they can keep track of the amount of product that each, each person in the state has actually purchased. Would come in here into the, the waiting room when, and wait for a bud tender to come in and direct them throughout the bud room. They would be able to have conversations with their bud tender about, you know, what they're, what kind of products they're looking for, what they need. They would check out on the north side of the building and then they would exit through the northern a different wall, kind of in the center of the east facade of the building. The back of the house would be on the, the west side of the building. We would have a break room for staff and just numerous things that are, that are necessary just to run the facility. On the north side, we would have processing, the processing facility as mentioned. And I, I probably would defer, and we actually have Ross on the line who, who has managed many of the facilities and he's usually the general manager and comes in and gets stores up and running. So if you have any questions directly related to operation of the facility, I will defer to Ross to do so. Would you guys like to take a second and ask any questions? Now, or would you like to just wait until the end of?
Just continue through your presentation, please.
Okay. Thank you. This is the, the renderings of the south side of the store. Mr. Johnson had asked for us to add the material. So we, we are intending on using brick for the majority of the building on the east and north side. And then we will have brick elements throughout the, the front of the, the, the north side or the front side of the store as well as a large amount of transparency. We will also be using elements of aluminum and insulated metal panel, paneling throughout as a, as an ancillary material.
And Andrew, this is, this is Tommy again chiming in. Just briefly, the, the, that brown brick will actually be a white, is intended to be white brick. So that's just one change that we'll have to make.
And this is just kind of a, a quick rundown of the security on the exterior of, of the facility. We will be adding cameras to each corner of the building. And they will be in compliance with the Michigan regulatory, the marijuana regulatory agency. And the more details of this are included in our security plan. Many questions?
Ms. Owens, are you looking for some comments and questions?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, Andrew, why don't you, could you stop sharing your screen so I could, I don't have to scroll through everybody's pictures here to see if anybody, otherwise I was only seeing a couple of you at a time. So. Anybody? Okay. All right. So since this is a, a public hearing, any members of the, the public that would like to speak in either support or opposition of this special land use request, we would invite your comments at this time. So let's do again. Ms. Neproski, if you could help us out, anybody that's there in council chambers with you, that's live there in person and that would like to make a comment. Either in support or opposition. So Mr. Willmack, you want to go through kind of your roll call again of other people that are online to see if there's any comments?
Sure. Thank you. I have Andrea Hendrick. Ms. Hendrick, would you like to make an additional public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
I have Ross. Would Ross like to make a public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
I have Haley Jonah. Would Miss Jonah, or I guess anybody with her, like to make a public comment at this time?
Okay.
I have Dave Chop. Would Dave Chop like to make a public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
I have C N Wright. Would C N Wright like to make a public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
I have John Abbo. Would Mr. Abbo like to make a public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
I have Renee Race. Would Miss Race like to make a public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
I have Brian. Would Brian like to make a public?
Sorry about that. Can you hear me? No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abbo. Would Brian like to make a public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
I have Ryan with an R. Ryan, would you like to make a public comment at this time? Ryan with an R, if he can hear us, would you like to make a public comment? See, Ryan unmuted themselves, but I haven't heard anything. Gerald, would Gerald like to make a public comment at this time?
No comment at this time. Sounds good.
And I finally have one phone number. I have 1-269-910-3179. Would that person like to make a public comment at this time? Okay. I believe I got through everybody.
Okay. All right. So then we will close this public hearing. Mr. Johnson, do you want to walk through your memo now, or do you want to wait until we move to the new business section?
I'd be glad to do it now.
Okay.
The, over my staff report, the applicant has addressed a number of the issues that I brought up, which I appreciate. We'll have to double check those once we receive the plans. Just a couple of procedural items that on page two of my report. It's my opinion that they're asking for two special use permits. So the planning commission would need to make a decision on each of those special use permits, the retailer and the processor. You can approve both of them. You could deny both of them, but if you approve one and not the other, that doesn't work out because in your marijuana ordinance, you can only have a retailer and processor together. They cannot exist separately in the highway commercial zoning district. So we need to keep that in mind when you get around to making a decision on this project. Any questions on that process part? Okay. Information that we would, we would like you to weigh in on, on the site plan. I had made a recommendation or a comment about providing landscape islands across the front of the row of parking closest to the building. That would just provide some color to the, to the front of the building and help delineate the parking rows for better traffic safety. I think there's two, maybe three rows there that a landscape island could be required and that would be required if, if they came in under today's zoning ordinance, but our ordinance allows you as the planning commission to impose those requirements because they've come back in for site plan review. So we'll need to take that up later in the meeting. Second, they had given us a floor plan. Some of the information we would look for and maybe it's addressed in their new submitted materials about the, the operation of the processor facility in terms of the process, the number of training employees and that sort of thing. And then the marijuana delivery plan, we looked for more information on that to meet our ordinance requirements regarding where will be delivered, how, what time of day, and just as important, from the process facility, where they process the marijuana product, how do they intend to get it to the front door of the retailer facility? Because they can't have a part, can't have an opening between the two facilities inside the building. That's state requirement. So we just need some more information on that. I believe their information also said there will be a security guard on site. Is that correct, Andrea? Will there be a security guard on site?
Yes.
Okay. Just so the planning commission knows that. And I think I will stop there. That they've addressed most of my comments, but again, we, we need to double check all that information before we can move on to the decision. So that concludes my comments.
Right, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay. All right. Thank you. We have a second public hearing for tonight. So I will open that public hearing for special land use request for Agromed LLC. The address for this one is 13903 White Creek in Cedar Springs, and they too are seeking special land use approval for recreational adult use marijuana retail and processing with the parcel number that ends there, 031. So we will open that public hearing. Is there somebody on the line with us today that represents Agromed?
Yes. Hi, my name is Aaron Smith. I'm here with Agromed, also with Cindy Devonport, our head of operations. And my uncle Greg Mackey, who is the owner of Agromed.
Great. Well, why don't you lead us through your application request here for these special land use considerations?
Okay. If you don't mind, Cindy and I are going to kind of tag team this as I'm kind of traveling right now. We're using the existing building as, as you guys are aware, which is currently used as a fireworks store. Much of what we are proposing to do is use everything there that is existing from the parking to the building itself. Some of the main things that, after getting the review back from the individual that performed it for, for Cedar Springs, we are bringing the landscaping up to code. We're adding eight new trees as well as four islands in the parking area. Those, those islands will also have landscaping in them. We are also looking at the parcel or the existing parking right now is 44 parking spots. I believe 29 is required under the ordinance for the use. So we do, we do have more parking, but we would like to use existing as it is. In regards to signage, we, we propose a sign on the, on the east side as well as one above the door. Inside of the building will be a processing facility as well. It's approximately 1,600 square feet and 4,200 square feet for the dispensary or the provisioning center, the retail facility itself, which brings it about 5,800 square feet. There'll be a firewall separating those two uses. The main entrance for the provisioning center is going to be on the east side. And the exit will be on, I guess, the northeast side. So the way the building is set up now with an entry and exit, I'm actually switching. We're actually switching the way that that will work. The provisioning center will be on the south side of the building. And that will have its own separate entrance and exit. Much of what you see there, like I said, is going to be existing. If you guys have any more specific questions, feel free to ask. Myself or Cindy can answer them. I don't know, Cindy, if you have anything else to add?
We just wanted to say this is Greg Mackey. I'm the owner and founder and, you know, we got five people on our team and we were the first licensed medical, medical marijuana store in Meskegon County, the first in Ottawa County, and the first in Montcom County. And so we're pretty excited about moving to Cedar Springs. It's like probably about a 35 minute drive from my house. And my sister lives in Cedar Springs on White Creek, about four miles north. But we're just excited at this opportunity. And we invite municipalities to come and visit our stores, check out our operations. We really pride ourselves on being compliant. Two of our stores are adult use. And next week, the state's coming out to hopefully approve our Nunica, Michigan store for adult use. So you know, we're about three years old. We were the ninth application out of over 26,000 people that have applied. So we got in at the ground level, made a lot of mistakes and learned a lot. So, you know, we, we consider ourselves local West Michigan people. And like I say, just happy, happy to move to Cedar Springs if you guys will allow it. And whatever you want us to do, we'll do it. Cindy, do you have anything? Nope, that's it.
Okay. All right. So let's make the floor available for public comments. So again, Ms. Neproski will look to you for anybody in the city council chambers that may want to speak in either support or opposition of the special land use.
Where else? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Willmack, you want to do your roll call of the online folks again?
Sure. Thank you. I, let's see. I have Greg, Mr. Mackey. Do you have any additional public comment?
No, thank you.
I have the phone number 1-269-910-3179. Do you have any additional public comment?
No, thank you.
I have Haley Jonah, Haley Jonah and company. Do you have any public comments?
No, thank you.
Andrea Hendrick, Ms. Hendrick, do you have any additional public comment?
Thank you.
Dave Chop. Dave Chop, do you have any public?
No, thank you.
C N Wright. C N Wright.
No, thank you.
Renee Race, Miss Race, do you have any public comment?
No, thank you.
Ross, does Ross have any public comment?
No, thank you.
John Abbo. Mr. Abbo, do you have any public comment?
No, thank you.
Mr. Abbo, I see your iPhone is also here. Does your iPhone have public comment?
No, thank you.
Okay. I have a separate iPhone that is just listed as iPhone. I'll ask to unmute. Does that person have a public comment?
No, thank you.
And I have Gerald. Does Gerald have public comment?
No comment. Thank you.
You know, that Gerald voice sounds awfully familiar. Okay. I believe I've gotten everybody. If I skipped over you, would you please have public comments at this time? I believe that's everybody, Mr. Owens.
So we will close that public hearing and Mr. Johnson, why don't you again, walk us through your August 22nd, 2020 memo?
Okay. Again, I would repeat that this application is for two special land uses, the marijuana retailer and the processor. So those will require separate votes by the planning commission at the appropriate time. Probably my biggest issue had to do with the, the site plan that they submitted, which was the one I received earlier. Had, was just a site plan that was prepared for discount fireworks back in 2010. I have since received a new site plan, but have not had appropriate time to review it. So I've listed a number of things that need to be shown on the site plan. And we'll have to go over those to make sure that they, they complied with what we've asked them to show. One of the other items had to do with a sidewalk, which is required by our zoning ordinance for new uses. I don't know if a waiver was granted by the city commission. I don't know if a waiver was granted by the city commission, city council back in 2012. If not, then this applicant will have to ask the city council for a sidewalk waiver or simply install the sidewalk. We're also looking for more information on the marijuana delivery plan as required by our ordinance. And the customer plan, some of those questions will be answered by, in reviewing the floor plan, which has now been provided. So I have not had time to review the new information. I just received it the other day. So until I do, I cannot advise you how to proceed on this until we make sure all the information has been provided. Okay, was my comments?
All right, planning commissioners, any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Bremmer.
Okay. When they talked about the traffic, they have on their site plan 10 registers and 21 chairs in the waiting room. The fireworks business was rarely open, and they likened that their traffic they would have with this business would be the same as that. I'm not sure that's true, and we don't have any traffic numbers for them. And another question was under D, how will it be designed to prevent smoke, odor, debris, and other marijuana substances? And the answer was just yes. So it doesn't really answer the question.
Ms. Bremmer, I'm sorry, are you specifically referring to their answers under the special land use submitted?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree, the answers were a little lacking there. Would like to see it filled out a little bit more. Yeah, Mr. Mackey, I don't know if you have a good method for determining how many people you've expected this business. Can you kind of talk to us for a second about how many cars or customers that you have at any of your other stores?
Yes. I would say seven to 10 when it's busy. It's kind of, you know, three or four at a time, coming and going. We are skilled doing curbside at two of our facilities, and the one they are allowing people inside because of the square footage, and it's not that busy. So you know, you know, maybe a holiday weekend on a payday, you know, three to five in the afternoon. Aaron might be good at this too, or Cindy, 10 or 15, or that's kind of high, isn't it? They, they seem to come and go a steady flow, but what do you think, Cindy?
Um, yeah, there's usually, go ahead, Aaron.
I was just going to say, we'd probably have about 30 people an hour. It's about what our other stores are in line with right now.
All right, what do you say Cindy?
Yeah, I'd say 30 to 40 an hour.
So how many at a time, or just like little rushes and then slow down?
It's usually, it's a six-minute turnaround time. Like they come in, they're in, in our facility area for less than six minutes before they're out of the parking lot again.
And I'm sorry, I don't have the information in front of me. Could somebody chime in with the number of required parking spots or provided parking spots at this location?
Yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
Required was 26, and we have 44 provided.
So you're expecting 30 per hour, you have 44 parking spots, but you don't anticipate that those 30 people would all be there at the same time?
No.
No, not at all. I'd probably say maximum five to six at a time, at one time.
Yeah.
So we definitely, we definitely have enough parking spots.
And I understand Ms. Bremmer's point, because of course I drive past this building every single day. On the 3rd of July, parking spot was full to overflowing. There were people parked on grass. So I understand her point, but I think that's reasonable information for the planning commission to kind of understand what the parking requirements might be there. And Ms. Bremmer, I'm just seeing page 9129 of the packet. That would be Agromed's odor elimination plan. I suspect most odor elimination plans you're going to see from marijuana businesses are all going to be very similar. As required under the city's local ordinance, they are required to have both a negative air pressure in the building, and anything exiting will probably be going through an activated carbon filtration system. And of course, you know, one of our just main requirements is we don't want these places smelling like marijuana. And I've been fortunate, I've been able to visit a number of marijuana businesses, both retail stores, grow operations, et cetera. And I will tell you, just based on my experience, I have not smelled marijuana outside any of these businesses. So I suspect the marijuana business is aware of these problems, and they know best how to contain it. Mr. Mackey, have you, have you heard any complaints from your other businesses about marijuana smells?
No, not, not at all. Like our store in Nunica is in a strip mall, and what we did is we had a ventilator in there, and 95% of our product all comes prepackaged, so there's no smell. However, the flour, we receive bulk, and we repackage that ourselves. And so we run those carbon filters in, in the strip mall, because the other person was just like, you know, eight inches away from us. We had to install a second ventilator, and not once have we smelt it since then, you know what I'm saying? So whatever the community wants, or the, you know, municipality requires, you know, we'll do whatever it takes. So that, that was, you know, like I say, because it was in a strip mall with a tenant on each side of us.
And the ventilators he's referring to is the negative air pressure system that we installed?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so for what it's worth, I've been to both Mr. Mackey's location in Muskegon. I recall not smelling marijuana at all, even inside the store. I've also been to the Loom Cannabis Store in Big Rapids. Similar, I was inside the store and could not smell marijuana. So I think that's a misplaced fear, just based on my own experience. I think I'm getting beyond the point.
Okay commissioners, any other questions for either Mr. Womack or Mr. Johnson? Right, so I think that concludes our information there for our public hearings. So let's move to old business and Loom Cannabis. Mr. Johnson, you wrote a second review memo for us. It was dated August 26th. You want to walk us through that?
Yes, be glad to.
And by the way, let me just, for folks, if you're, if you have your packet, I think it starts on page nine is the materials for Loom, if you want to look at that in your packet.
And Mr. Johnson's report starts at page 6464.
Thanks. So go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Well, you've had a chance to read my report. They have made a number of changes to the site plan, particularly in the building facade. I understand we received new facade illustrations just recently. They have provided a upgraded alley version, and they intend to make that more of a, looks like almost a public space to invite people through from the parking, municipal parking lot on the east through the alley to the front door of the facility. They intend to provide bicycle racks, trees, concrete walk, landscaping, lights, and a bike rack. So those are items for your consideration. We had some questions about the dumpster location. They provided a new site plan about four o'clock today. I just had a chance to glance at it. Other information has come in that really haven't had time to look at, that may answer some of our questions. Probably the biggest thing I would bring to your attention is the improvement of the alley, and I made some comments in my report about making that area a real attractive place. While it looks very nice, one of my concerns have to do with inviting the public to sit there, park their bike there, and that sort of thing. And I just wondered about the appropriateness of that, given the fact that one of our requirements in our ordinance is to try to place these facilities 1,000 feet away from schools. And yet by improving the looks of the alley with bike racks and lights and making it a pass-through, you're really inviting the public and kids to come into that area. So I just wonder about the appropriateness of that, and also whether the liability on the part of Loom, where they're asking people to actually loiter on the, on the property of a marijuana facility. I wonder if the LARA would approve of that or not. So that may be a condition if you decide to approve the improvements to the alley, whether the state would allow that kind of public space, if you will, right on the side of the marijuana facility. Also, that area will be subject to surveillance by 24-hour security cameras. Whether that's appropriate for the people that want to rest there, they would need to know that they're under security camera at all times. And then finally, one thing I didn't bring up is, is the Kent Theater next door. Once that begins to operate with families lining up outside to enter the theater there, whether it's appropriate to have the marijuana facility right next door to that, and particularly have benches and bike racks there. So I think that's, that's an appropriate topic for discussion. Some of the other items have to do with the unloading and loading of marijuana, the delivery plan. We need more information on that. I think I'll stop there. There's maybe some other items that the applicant wants to address based on my report, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to address those to you.
Okay, well, let's, let's do that. Do you have a copy of that memo from Mr. Johnson? Have you had a chance to look over that?
This is Chris Enright, the architect. Yes, we've had that memo that we've looked at, and we've actually responded to the documents that Mr. Johnson has referred to, sending in this afternoon, were in direct response to that, to that letter. So if I could, I would like to share my screen regarding some of these specific issues that were being discussed. So if you will. Let's see. So first of all, good evening. My name is Christopher Enright. I'm the architect for the project. Along with me this evening is Mr. John Abbo. He is corporate counsel for Loom. I'm here this evening to answer questions and to discuss the building, the site plan, the plan itself, as well as the improvements that we are proposing to make, not only for our building, but for, hopefully for the public. Mr. Abbo is available to answer questions about the corporate structure and anything related to the business aspects of Loom this evening. So the image that you're seeing in front of you this evening was the the response, the final response that we've had to the various comments to the original critiques of the building. You can see that what we've done is we have taken the original Vitelli's Pizza, the structure of the building, and we've maintained it. We have, instead of proposing the painted purple brick on the Main Street facade, we are using the original, the original brick, and then we're proposing to clean up the brick on the, the existing brick veneer on the south side of the building to restore it to its original state. Our facade or our entryway for the building, as it faces on Main Street, will essentially be an inset within the existing framework of the, the existing building. We have eliminated all of the metal, we, of the standing seam metal on the facade. We've instead added more glass, clear glass around the door, the entryway, the waiting area, and we substituted the metal with cast stone product, a natural cast stone product, which essentially is very similar to limestone. It's a corporate color as well as something that we can, feels very consistent with the downtown area and the historic nature of the downtown. We are proposing, as Mr. Johnson has indicated, from the original proposal, we have go to next slide here. We are proposing to close the access to Main Street along this section here. Right now, it's considered to be quote-unquote "an alleyway", when in fact, it's actually our private property. But it actually functions or looks like an alleyway, being that there's an opening for vehicles to go back and forth to the rear of the property. Clearly, in a downtown area, in a pedestrian-friendly area such as this, and especially since it's close to a feature, a public feature such as the theater, that vehicles going back and forth in this space to access the parking areas and deliveries is quite a conflict with pedestrian traffic, and actually creates a bit of a conflict, safety conflict. So we're proposing to cut that off, continuing the brick pavers, which is the city standard, along the curb line, bring the sidewalk across, and then enhance the pedestrian experience going from the public parking area in the back through to Main Street, either through public or public, the public to park, and to access the rest of the the businesses along Main Street, or for our customers to come through the back and up to the front of the building. Our intent was to deliver a public amenity. In most of our facilities, we have 10 facilities across the state currently, and a number of them, a number more planned, where at each of our locations, we're providing a variety of alternative energy sources. We're encouraging healthy aspects such as pedestrian access to the buildings as well as bicycling. We provide at a number of our locations, air pumps and things of that nature to promote healthy access to the building and alternate ways to get to the building, especially in a downtown area where we're trying to limit the amount of vehicle traffic and focus more on pedestrian, biking, and other alternative sources of accessing our property. So our thought was to create a pathway as well as some intense landscaping in the space. It's sort of like a pocket space, a pocket park, if you will. The thought was to have benches as an amenity, if there's a concern about people standing about and whatnot. We just wanted to underscore the fact that we do have a security individual on staff during all open hours, where they will discourage any individuals doing any negative behavior, loitering of any kind, whether it's associated with our building or not. But again, the, the intent was to provide a, a public amenity on our private property for the benefit of the people enjoying the downtown space. Currently, we, we will have security cameras throughout the perimeter of the building, and as indicated in the Mr. Johnson's requested note from before, as well as the city manager, that we are also blocking off access currently from the street to the south, Cherry Street, to our property. It was a two-track access point at this point, which is really not a quote-unquote "legal access" to our property. So our development, by virtue of the, of our site plan, will block off this current area from Cherry Street with the landscaping as well as the paved area, which provides the link to the back parking. We're also proposing to continue the sidewalk, which currently is on public property, we understand, but in many of our practices of developing downtown businesses and promoting downtown business, it's common to have access points where we can have public parking spaces, and people can walk from those spaces and then go out to the public streets. A number of the, there were a number of letters that were, that were written into the public comment about odor. I know there's already been discussion about odor and things of that nature, and the concerns with this particular use. It's a newer use to a lot of people. It's being introduced relatively quickly. We recognize that. We want to make everyone aware that Loom has a facility, a grow facility in Everett, Michigan, where we produce all of our own products. All those products are packaged at that location, and they are delivered to the various Loom facilities in completely sealed packaging. All the packaging enters the building sealed, it is displays sealed, and it is sold as sealed. Uh, so nothing is, is open to the air. Uh, if such things should happen to get open for whatever reason, which is completely unplanned, we have uh, as uh Mr. Womack indicated, the systems, we have the carbon filter systems and the HEPA filter systems, which completely eliminate any possibility of odor uh emanating out to the public way. So uh, it is our intent that with uh these variety of improvements in the downtown area uh and upgrading the exterior facility of the building as well as uh bringing this facility back into more of a downtown, traditional downtown uh location, eliminating the traffic uh conflicts with the pedestrians and increasing pedestrian and bike access to this particular location. Uh, we feel that uh, uh, we have a successful design currently.
So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, or Mr. Abo is on hand to answer any questions about operations.
Um, could you uh stop sharing your screen so I can see everybody's faces? It's easier for me to see if anybody's gotten a question.
My apologies.
No, no problem. Um, no, it was great to see that, but then I can only see like two people, so.
There we are.
All right, so um commissioners, any questions for Mr. Enright or Mr. Abo on what's been presented here? Mr. Owens?
Uh, yes, it just occurred to me because of our recent discussions that we just had, this could be for either of you. Um, what kind of traffic do you anticipate you would have like on an hourly basis coming in and out of this facility?
So I'll take that one, Chris. So we're, we're thinking um similar to what the other um applicants on the call mentioned, which is about 30 to 40 an hour. Um, based on our previous experience in our other facilities, we have a six-minute turnaround time as far as getting customers in and out of our facilities. So uh, we're, we're constantly creating efficiencies to make that better.
So in a similar vein, um, Mr. Enright, maybe you want to answer this one, but I've seen a uh alternative uh site plan that had some parking in the rear of this building. Is that still a possibility? And if so, would you like to talk about it?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mr. Womack. I appreciate you bringing that up. Yes, um, recently, our real estate group has approached uh the owners of the Redbirds uh facility to the north of us, and we have uh an agreement, a, a handshake agreement, if you will, meeting of the minds um for an easement that would allow us to access, as you've pulled up on the screen, thank you for that, the parking spaces that we were originally proposing as head-in parking spaces along uh that curb line that we're proposing. So that curb line would then um provide yet uh another barrier to any kind of access back and forth along Cherry Street, but uh those parking spaces would also supplement uh our customers coming in to use the rear of the building. Uh, at the time that we had originally proposed that, that as you had pointed out, uh, we needed to have a clear 24 foot wide access on the north side of those parking spaces beyond the public parking line to legally access those parking spaces. And it appears as if we at least have the construct of that to, to be entered in officially at this point. Um, so it would be at that point that we would then provide those parking spaces. It would be paved at that location uh as well as with the paved area to the south of us, and we would be working with uh the county and the city in terms of um refining that layout uh around the future drainage system that would coming through the back of that area.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, you show a dumpster on there. Do you really have a need for a dumpster?
Uh, that's a good question, John. Did you want to handle that?
Yeah, sure. So typically, we uh, you know, we have very little waste that's uh, that's actually uh, that actually comes up on a, you know, daily basis. We would estimate it to be, you know, half a cup of actual waste um on a monthly basis. So in, in anything that is, that is, you know, waste or if it's marijuana waste, it's rendered unusable in unrecognizable form. So there's not necessarily a need for the dumpster. Um, it's something that we could potentially eliminate, but I think we kind of wanted to be complete with respect to our submission and, you know, it could either, it could go either way. Certain, certain facilities, we have dumpsters, other facilities, we don't. So it's more of, you know, what the city's preference is with respect to that.
Okay, well, just to follow up, perhaps you could solve that by, by showing the location and labeling it as a future dumpster if needed. And if your diagram is correct, that you could actually get a, a truck in there with all the turning radius and actually empty, it'd be pretty tight, but uh I just, I guess because you can't dispose of the marijuana waste in the dumpster, what else are you going to put in there? And if you don't need it, I don't see a need for you to, to actually build it.
And of course, I've spoken with the applicant myself. Um, the city encourages businesses to share dumpsters. Um, so they could work out an agreement perhaps with the Redbird or some of the other businesses in that location that already have a dumpster. Um, and of course, there's always the option of a wheelie bin or simply transporting their garbage off-site and disposing at a different location. Uh, but I agree with Mr. Johnson that the very minimum, they should uh place a location on their site plan, uh which they appear to have done, uh indicating where they would put it if it was built. And of course, applicants should know, uh, we will not allow you to place a new dumpster without it being in an enclosure. Um, so I'll just leave it at that.
So to follow up on that, that we had submitted the dumpster enclosure details with the materials to match the existing building to make sure that if that dumpster was in fact constructed, that it would meet uh the current standards for the screening as well as, you know, matching the existing building. Um, but uh, for what Mr. Abo indicated, uh, a lot of a, a number of our locations, we don't have dumpsters, um, and the product that goes into those dumpsters is made inert. Um, so it's essentially a very minor, minor amount of waste um that is being generated each facility. This is a relatively small facility as well, 1,500 square feet or less, so we wouldn't imagine there'd be much, much refuse coming from this facility.
Well, I would recommend that you show the location, but just label it as future dumpster if, if necessary or if needed.
I would.
Then you can put it in if you do need it.
Uh, Mr. Owens, um, I do have some comments. If you, if you wouldn't mind me going through my comments at this time?
Yep.
Okay. So um, I, I think, and I can't believe I'm going to say this, but I think I'm going to be the voice of optimism on this one. Um, so I understand uh Mr. Johnson's report. Um, and of course, he's always very thorough and very thoughtful, and I thank him for that. Um, I actually really like uh what they proposed, the alleyway. Um, it actually kind of reminds me of an alleyway I used to walk through all the time to get to McComb Circuit Court when I was a practicing attorney. Um, you know, I don't see any problems with there being people loitering there, if you want to call it loitering. Um, you know, loitering to one person is simply existing in a public space to another. Uh, I agree that is Loom's uh problem as far as liability might be concerned. Uh, and of course, you're not allowed to smoke or use marijuana in the public anyways. Uh, so it might simply be a good location for somebody to sit and wait for their turn to get inside the Loom building uh to make their purchase. Or on the other hand, uh, somebody who showed up early to the movie and wants to just hang out for a few minutes before the movie starts, uh, or maybe for somebody who was waiting for a reservation at the Redbird. Now, I think it'd be easy enough to remove the benches, um, that would help eliminate any concerns about loitering, uh, but I don't personally see that as a problem. You know, I, I think uh creating the public space, as Mr. Johnson indicated, is, is just going to be an absolute positive uh for the alleyway and for the city at large. I think it'll make a very nice walkway through that area. I, I also really like the facade that um, uh, Mr. Enright came up with, uh, the colors, the brickwork. I think it all looks really nice. I mean, I'm not much of a yellow door guy, but you know, hey, uh, to each their own, I guess, a little bit. So one thing uh I did mention in my report, um, which I've just finished, so I apologize, I didn't get that to uh the applicant, um, is that there is a lot that's going to be going on in this location with the Kent County Green Commission. Um, so it, I think it's a little difficult for the applicant to fully plan uh everything that's going to occur there, because there may be some issues, a future date that, you know, we simply can't address at this time, uh, based on what the Kent County Green Commissioner is going to do. Um, so you know, th- this might be one of those times if, if Planning Commission is comfortable with it. Um, kind of saying we approve of things in, in theory, um, and allow zoning administrator to, you know, kind of approve things going forward, uh, if that's something that we approve of. So I'm just, I'm looking at other people's work here. Yeah, applicants should show secure transporter parking and loading. Uh, if they've got the parking spots, uh, as we were discussing previously, uh, that creates both an obstacle to secure transport, um, and also the dumpster enclosure. Uh, so they may have, you know, to require their dumpster be offloaded and their secure transporter to be arriving at certain times when they won't have customers. Um, the sidewalk and some of the other things that we discussed, I'm sorry, that Mr. Enright discussed, uh, those would be on city property and you have to get city approval. Uh, don't think that'd be a problem, but you know, the, the city council would have to approve that. Um, exterior camera locations, um, most of that security stuff is going to be reviewed and approved of by a state inspector. Of course, we, the city, asked for it just so we can double check, but um, that will ultimately be decided and approved of by the state. Um, uh, Mr. Johnson, you didn't state it um just now, but I agree that they would have to come up with some plan for watering those plants in the alleyway. Um, we can't always trust the rain. It would be a horrible thing to have a beautiful alleyway like that and for all the plants to simply die for lack of watering. Yeah, so signage is approved up at a later date uh through a zoning application, so it doesn't need to be approved up at this time. Uh, the bike rack, um, I actually like the idea despite what Mr. Johnson has indicated. I don't think this has anything to do with schools or school children or anything like that. Uh, this community is actually very well-known for uh adults who bicycle. Um, the White Pine Trail brings in hundreds of riders on the weekends, um, and I think having a bike rack uh for any and all businesses is a good idea, so I don't see any problem with that. Sorry, I'm just kind of scrolling through my comments here, which I can send to the applicant after the meeting. Uh, anyways, so I, I think there's a couple minor things that Planning Commission really needs to look at, uh, the facade, whether they like the facade, uh, whether they need to see a final plan of the overall site plan with the parking included. Um, I think those are some of the major things that Planning Commission should review. Um, but if they can come to a conclusion and uh, I guess, agreement on that, I don't see any reason why some of the more minor details like dumpster enclosures uh couldn't be tossed to the zoning administrator uh and approve things tonight, but I guess final approval to the zoning administrator or chairperson, however, Planning Commission likes to do it. Mr. Bremmer?
Um, I have some comments I'd like to make. Um, we've talked about the proposed building's facade, the colors, the windows. We've talked about parking, deliveries, traffic, and so forth. What we haven't talked about is the elephant in the room, and that is our responsibility to strictly follow the standards outlined in our ordinance when contemplating issue, issuing a special land use. Regardless of whether you are personally in favor of or opposed to marijuana or have a potential economic reason for allowing a marijuana business in town, as planning commission members, we have taken an oath to uphold the law and we must follow it regardless of pressure from businesses hoping to settle here. Section forty five seventy-one dictates that, quote, "The planning commission shall require the general standards in addition to any requirements for a specific use shall be satisfied," unquote. "All of the standards must be met or else a special land use cannot legally be issued." Under those stud- general standards, we are charged with making sure that, number one, is under letter A, "Such a use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. This proposed use from Attitude Wellness will completely change the small-town character of Cedar Springs, especially in the downtown and surrounding areas. The type of products sold and the fact that banking systems are unavailable to the marijuana industry because of federal laws creates a dangerous level of cash that can lead to crime. A three-year study in Denver showed an increase of eighty-three crimes a year in areas surrounding a marijuana shop. We do not need to attract, we do not need the kind of use that attracts more crime." Under letter D of the standards, quote, "Not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operation that will, will be detrimental to any person's property or general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic." Traffic will definitely increase on Main Street and the surrounding areas. The same is true for the Seventeen Mile and White Creek interchange, as those from surrounding areas come to buy marijuana. By the applicant's own admission, thirty to forty per hour and six-minute turnaround, you can understand how much traffic's going to be going on the side streets and on the post office and so forth. The intersection at White Creek and Seventeen Mile has a history of accidents and increasing traffic will only add to the numbers. Current businesses on Main already have a short supply of on-street parking, and this type of business will tra- draw much more traffic. I've personally witnessed the constant coming and going of vehicles at one of Loom's closest businesses. Around here, kids ride bikes and families and seniors walk downtown, visiting the library, restaurants, the theater, and to walk the trail. The heavy traffic will make it even more difficult for parking and for pedestrians to cross Main Street, creating yet another safety hazard. Under letter E, quote, "Be consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning district in which it is proposed to locate such use," unquote. The intent and purpose for Cedar Springs is outlined in the master plan. Keeping its small-town character, reinforcing the downtown as a quaint center for community gatherings to attract specialty businesses that will enhance the unique character of the area and to make it safe and comfortable to walk and bike with our families and where seniors feel safe. There is nothing quaint, charming, sweet, attractive, or old-world about a business that sells drugs. No other area business necessitates armed guards, but the marijuana businesses do because they are likely to draw criminal activity. We don't need to increase the threat. The scope under the special land use says, "This article provides a set of procedures and standards for special uses of land or structures which, by their unique characteristics, require special consideration in relation to the welfare of adjacent properties in the community as a whole. The regulations and standards herein are designed to allow, on the one hand, practical latitude for the investor or developer, but at the same time, maintain adequate provision for the protection of health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the committee, of community." We've all seen the effects on our stu- students, excuse me, from parents' secondhand marijuana smoke. Teachers see the changes in behaviors, test scores, and achievements. Social workers have witnessed how, when marijuana is used at home, students are greatly affected. According to the Washington State Study, quote, "Youth use and addiction rates increase due to ease of accessibility." Let's get ster- serious, we already have a drug problem in Cedar Springs. We've all heard the stories of how drugs affect the family unit with crime, child abuse, spousal abuse, lack of motivation, and adults and children alike. I've heard from business leaders, doctors, social workers, and citizens- I've heard from business leaders, doctors, social workers and citizens who are extremely concerned about this issue. There is a real threat to the health, safety, convenience and general welfare of the community when it comes to allowing marijuana businesses. A marijuana business is not what was intended for Cedar Springs and this commission has the responsibility to follow the ordinance's special land use standards. After hearing all the comments and from Mr. Johnson and the city manager and their four amended, aforementioned reasons. I move to deny the request from Attitude Wellness LLC for a special land use permit to establish a marijuana retail. Establishment on property located at sixteen North Main Street. As the use described in the application materials and illustrated on the site plan reviewed by the commission on September one, two thousand and twenty. Does not meet the special land use approval standards contained in section forty-five seventy-one of the zoning ordinance.
Ms. Brummer, did you intend it as a motion?
Yes, I did.
She did make that as a motion, yes. I will support the motion. Discussion commissioners.
I have some comments if.
Mr. Owens, please.
I think that I largely have to disagree with Ms. Brummer. I think that, I mean, a lot of the things that she brings up could be valid concerns, but I think that a lot of it is, especially the, the. Terms of, you know, like the, the moral aspects and things of that nature. I think that that's outside of our scope. The, the state has already approved marijuana. I don't think that. It being in our city is going to be predicated on whether or not there's a shop here that's selling and it's, I mean, it's already here. We all, you know, we all live here, we've seen it. And I think that as far as the character of downtown, essentially this just functions as another retail establishment. There's no consumption on-site. As per regulations, so I don't see how there's any, I don't see how there's any issue with this being allowed. It just seems like this is a, this is another retail establishment, which is going to bring a lot of business into downtown. Which I thought is what we were trying to promote was having more traffic into the downtown area to promote downtown businesses.
Mrs. Brummer.
If you have read the scope and the requirements for a special land use. There is no way that this could, could fit the bill. We have to maintain. The general welfare of the community. And I don't think having marijuana in our downtown is going to do what our master plan or this special land use. Has outlined.
Mr. Conley. I think you're still muted, Clint.
My belief Ms. Brummer has mischaracterized many of the terms within. The master plan and within the. Within the spectrum that we, we're, I'm, 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 sorry, let me, let me restate. There is a term that I've learned from debates called power tagging. And when you say that a thing. Is something, but it's actually just your opinion. You are power tagging your arguments. So you've taken many terms that we have within our ordinances, that we have within our master plan. And you've assigned meetings to them that I don't believe that we all agree with. And based upon those meetings, you've come to the determination that this is not allowable. This commission voted six to one. To allow these type of businesses in the B-two area. It was then approved by the city council. That's not what's on the table at the moment. What's on the table is whether or not this particular business works in this location.
Mrs. Brummer.
I have read quotes from our special land use and from the master plan. I did not make it up. If you read it, then you know what it says. They want to keep a small-town character, a quaint downtown and. And the, you know, the, the definition of quaint.
Quaint is doing a lot of work right there.
Pardon me?
The word quaint is doing a lot of work right there. Meaning your definition of quaint does not necessarily meet everybody else's.
I looked it up in the dictionary, so I guess it's Webster's also.
I'm, I'm sorry, I spoke over Ms. Brummer, this was her time. I yield it back to her.
Ms. Brummer, do you have anything else?
I would just encourage the members to read the special land use requirements. And. Leave your personal opinions outside. If, how many of you have read them? How many of you know what they say? We get them every time we have a special land use. Mr. Johnson. Prince or sends them to us. And I know what they say and I know that these businesses do not fit the bill.
Well, I, I think what Mr. Johnson put in his. In his memo is probably the question that we have to ask for every special land use request. And he has that on page three of his report. For any land use, the main question should be, is this the appropriate location for this use? So I, I think, not, not to. I don't, I don't want to take your whole argument and, and, you know, diminish it by just trying to put it in that one question, but I, I think that that's what. Mrs. Brummer was trying to say is, is really, is this the appropriate use? Appropriate location in, in this particular use, so. This is, Mr. Johnson.
Well, just to put a different point on that, it's, uh. These standards are deliberately discretionary on the part of the planning commission. Each commissioner looks at each of these standards and decides themselves, each person, whether it meets that standard or not. Based on the information that they have available, so you are rendering in a certain aspect their own personal opinion. And they're giving their opinion on whether, in their mind. This use is appropriate based on these standards, so you have that discretion and there is always room for disagreement. Not commission, commissioners will not always agree on whether a use meets the standard or not, so just want to provide that explanation to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Owens, may I?
Yes.
So there's a lot to unpackage with what Ms. Brummer has stated. Of course, the. Whether it's an appropriate business to be placed in this location, I'll echo some of the previous comments and that is, we're talking about a retail store. There are lots of retail stores on Main Street. I don't see how this would be any different. I'd further state that both the planning commission and the city council voted by six to one. To indicate that they believed that this was an appropriate type of business to be placed in this location. I've read the special land use requirements a hundred times. I'm very well aware of them. Number B is whether it'll be adequately served by services. I see no statements or complaints about that section. Ms., Ms. Brummer indicated she thinks it'll create an excessive production of traffic. I don't know if I've ever heard any statement that traffic is excessive. We've had lots of complaints from businesses up and down Main Street that there is not enough traffic. There's not enough foot traffic. There's not enough. People come into the downtown. This is one of those things I think was part of the intent of allowing marijuana into the town. To bring more customers to the businesses that already exist. Yeah, I mean, th- this is one of those things where Ms. Brummer was able to pack in five minutes worth of talking and I can't respond to every point that she had. But I'll, I'll again echo what Mr. Conley indicated and that is, you can't simply just declare something is true. If it's your opinion. I read the same study that Ms. Brummer quoted about property crimes increasing. And that, that study very specifically pointed out that the increase in property crimes. Was almost identical to any neighborhood that had either a liquor store, a bar or a restaurant that served alcohol. So any argument on that front would also be used against the brewery in the Red Bird. Yeah, I, I, I just think, Ms. Brummer, you are trying to impugn your own personal feelings about marijuana. Into the special land use standards, which I've never once seen you do. Regarding the other ten or fifteen special land use businesses that the planning commission has reviewed over the last several years. Thank you.
Well, as Mr. Johnson stated, I mean, that's, that's what kind of the. Our personal opinions are what is built into the discussion of the special land use, so. Ms. Brummer, did you have something else?
Yes, there isn't the threat to the health and safety of the community. When we've dealt with the other special land uses. And the study that I talked about, the eighty-three. Crimes increase didn't say anything about breweries. Or, or bars.
It did, if you read the full study.
Mr. Owens, I think I saw your hand.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I do understand on a level, Ms. Brummer's trepidation about marijuana in general. I understand that it has been recently legalized for recreational use and that there's not a lot of. There's not a large body of work overall on, you know, various health benefits or lack thereof. However, I feel like in this particular instance, there's not really. A huge question of that because again, as Mr. Womack stated, this is just a. This is just a shop, this is just. You know, there, this is simply, people are coming in and, you know, buying a product and leaving. There is no. Inherent risk that we're adding to the city on that level. I mean, if, if it's not being sold within the city, people that are going to obtain it will obtain it elsewhere.
Any other discussion? Okay, so, um, let me, let me just clarify because there's a, there's a motion on the floor and so let me just clarify. Because your vote may sound a little backwards on this one, because the motion was to deny the request. So when I say, are you in favor of the motion? Then you're, you're really saying that you're, you're in favor of denying. The, the special land use request. Does that make sense? If you say no, then you're saying that you're in favor of it, so. Since the motion was made to deny, so anybody clear on, on that? Because it, it sounds a little bit different than, than the way we would normally vote, so. So we're voting on the motion from Mrs. Brummer. Supported by me to, motion to deny the special land use request for Attitude Wellness. And I think she pretty much just read the, the rest of the motion that was there and Mr. Johnson's report on page four, so I won't. I won't re, reread all of that, so all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aren't you going to take a voice vote?
I, I don't think we need to, I can see everybody, so. So all, all in favor of. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what.
Shandell's asking me to do a roll call vote.
Oh, okay, uh, let me find my sheet here so I can do it this way. All right. Mr. Bray?
No.
Mrs. Brummer. I'm sorry, I was looking down my, okay, I was looking down my paper, so I didn't, Mr. Conley? Uh, Mr. McGrath?
I'm going to abstain.
Harrison Owens?
No.
Mr. Watson?
No.
Chair votes yes, so the noes prevail four to two with one abstention. So. Returning to. Mr. Johnson's report on page four where he says approval is granted subject to the following conditions. Commissioners, if you could look through those. And what your level of, of comfort on which parts you want to address further, which parts you want to approve. Maybe conditionally with zoning administrator approval. As they come finalized, Mr. Watson, yeah, unmute, please.
I actually had a question about the lighting of the alleyway. Was there any? Particular, like. Like minimum requirements and I don't, I didn't get a great look at the site plan before this. I wasn't sure if they put in, if there was any lighting, but at all or how much. I was wondering if they could address that real quick.
Mr. Enright, do you want to do that one?
Yes, I'm happy to answer that question. Our, first of all, whatever lighting we propose will meet the photometric standards and the light level standards of the, of the ordinance. We are proposing to add pole lights, street-type lights, street scale-type lights, fixtures to the alleyway to give it that. Pedestrian character.
All right, thank you, um, and just a comment, I'd like to say that I like the physical aesthetic of the alleyway. It looks really warm and inviting and I kind of like where they're going with it.
Right, so let me just get you to, everybody to weigh in on, because there's a couple of things in the ten points that Mr. Johnson put. Under here that we need to, so number three on this was the benches and bike racks. The decision is be removed, be retained. What, what, what is your preference on that, folks? Yes, Mr. Conley?
I would vote, I'm not voting yet, but I would posit that we should retain as they retain the bike racks, retain the benches. As they show on the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I like the idea of the chairs and the bike racks. Could we add additional parking spots to the rear? That would be very beneficial.
I think that's.
Gerald, would this be Mr. Hall, the mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I don't think you were present at the beginning of the meeting. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear who is talking. Mr. Owens, would you like to acknowledge Mr. Hall as being present?
Well, I guess we need to, we need a, I'll, I'll make a motion that Mr. Hall is present and we can add him. From this point on for any voting there.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of acknowledging Mr. Hall has now joined us, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, no. Okay. Thank you, um, okay, so just, folks, I guess, give me a quick, let's do a thumbs up if you want to retain. The benches and the bike racks, item number three, if you want to retain them, thumbs up. Okay, and obviously, all right, okay. The other one that we need to do is the facade. That Mr. Enright showed us in that picture, that's their, their latest one. Is that acceptable to you as far as design, colors, materials? Oh, there we go, so this, this is the latest one.
Question?
Yes.
I think the yellow door is gaudy.
I think it's supposed to match the part of their logo there.
Well, I'm going to agree with Ms. Bremer on that one. So you can write that all down.
Uh, Mr. Bray?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the yellow door, but what they showed us earlier, that's supposed to be glass windows, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't think this is the. Um, how about uh, Mr. Mr. Enright? Could could we have him share his screen again with that elevation that he that he showed us?
Sure.
Do you still have that available?
Yep, I do. This is, there we go. This is the this is the latest elevation, which is similar to what we're showing there. The door is not yellow, it's gold. It's like a gold leaf. Material.
And then Mr. Enright, is that that glass all around the door?
Clear. It's all clear glass showing activity inside the building.
Okay. All right, so that's that's the facade that that we're going with at this at this point. So. What? What is your preference on that, folks?
I like it personally. Um, I like that they kept the brick. Um, look along the top line, but I like they also the symbol and the coloring going on in the bottom half. It kind of. Nods toward their own personal franchise, and I don't think it really conflicts too horribly with the aspect of the surrounding area.
If I could just make a a comment, if I could interrupt, if that's part of the procedure. I just wanted to to indicate that, you know, we've really been working with the with the city on this in in terms of getting rid of the. A number of the corporate colors such as the purple. If you if you take a look at the website. For Loom, most of the buildings, not all, Big Rapids is an example, does not have the purple. But a lot of the other locations that we have represented with a purple color, which we basically eliminated except for. Uh, the logo, the other color that's iconic to our to our product is the is the gold. Uh, which is replicated in the loom, the 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 icon above the loom name as well as the door. So. Respectfully, we're hoping to keep some level of the corporate. Uh, identity of of what we're trying to show here in exchange for having the building taken back to the original color with a brick. And meeting some of the other requirements with the glass and the stone, etc.
Any other thoughts?
Mr. Owens?
Yeah, yes.
Is that metallic gold?
It's like a matte type finish. Yes, gold. It's a yes.
But not metallic, not shiny.
Uh. That is a good question, John. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, whether it's considered to be reflective or not. It does have some reflectivity to it. It's not like shiny. But there's a bit, it's not like a matte. I indicated matte, but it's actually got a little bit of a gloss to it. I would say satin may be the best the best. It's not semi gloss like a paint. It'd be more like a satin type finish.
Mr. Bray?
Yeah, if if what is on the screen is what is being presented, then I'm okay with that design. That looks fairly nice.
Uh, Mr. Conley, sorry, I I don't have everybody's picture up at once, so.
Great. Thank you. I concur with Mr. Bray.
Okay, I don't see. All right, so um, I I think. The bottom line is if I picked up the the tone of everybody that we're we're acceptable, that's that design is acceptable to us. Okay, so. Um. Mr. Johnson, on your that list of ten, I think those were the only two that we had to really. Is that correct or is there something else that we needed to? Deliberate on?
I think that's correct. Regarding the parking. Spaces that you wanted to add, you would probably add to that condition that would be subject to obtaining an easement from the Redbird property owners being submitted to the city manager.
Uh, I did speak with both the applicant and the Redbird, and they were in the process of doing that yesterday, but I agree that would be a requirement.
Yeah, and a question for the applicants. Would those parking spaces be for employees or open to Loom customers?
Uh, our understanding is it'd be they they would be open to customers as well as employees.
Okay. Would any of those spaces be barrier free? You don't have any.
Yes, yes. I believe that the last image that Mr. Womack indicated had a barrier free space. That was our intent anyway. So yes, one of those spaces would be barrier free, be a van accessible space.
And that would also, you'd have to leave space for your dumpster there as well?
If that's decided to go there, then we would leave space for the dumpster.
Although I suppose you could, as long as you stripe it. Uh, you could continue to use it for parking. You just have to indicate that the parking will go away if you decide to put the dumpster in.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Enright, um, one concern that you and I had talked about previously was with storm water runoff with the added. Paved surfaces, um, at least in the draft I see here, it says underground detention system. Um, and we also discussed that that would not be permitted, I'm sure with the Kent County Drain Commission. Um, do you have any thoughts about what you might do? Would it simply be put right into the storm drain? Yeah, I'm an engineer. Do you have any thoughts about where the storm runoff would go there?
My understanding from from our discussions is that the where the parking spaces are proposed, that that drain is running north and south through that. To the back of the buildings. Um, I've not seen any of the proposed plans from the county about where the drain is going. Um, but I'm presuming that we do have space under the quote unquote alley area to to detain.
Well, then I've got some bad news for you. The drain is expected to go right through the alleyway.
So it's going to do through the alley and through the back of the building?
Correct.
Okay. Well, what we've done in other areas where we've provided green spaces is that currently that there's a coefficient for runoff for the gravel that when we when we add green space. That there is sort of a trade off there that that water is is held a little bit more if in the. Uh, in the in the landscaping area. We've added more landscaping from what that particular image is shown there in those. Uh, rectangles on the side of the building. So where we've where there's hard packed gravel right now, we're showing landscaping, which is going to help with the runoff. Um, if there's any area of any kind available underground, um, you know, we would have drains and pipes of some kind to at least hold water. And be able to run it back and forth. I have to imagine there's some space under there to run a few pipes back and forth just to hold water temporarily before it's. Uh, before it's drained off into the stormwater system.
Um, so Mr. Owens, I stepped out for a minute. I don't know if the board discussed this, but there is a sidewalk being proposed that would. Go right here, if you guys can see my mouse, where this current grass area is.
Right.
Does planning commission have any thoughts regarding requiring that or permitting that?
Mr. Bray?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with adding that. That's. Right now, it's a little bit of some dead green space anyway, so it'd probably make it look a little bit nicer. One other question, though, that was brought up earlier was watering or. Keeping those plants, trees, etc. Along the alleyway taken care of. We should probably have something in that.
And that was listed as a requirement that they would have to add to the sketch plan.
Right. Several, either one or both of my response letters indicated that we will be providing a complete and comprehensive irrigation plan for any green space, any landscape material. At that location.
All right, yeah, Mr. Johnson?
In regard to that, I would suggest that they provide a separate landscape plan.
Agreed, they should. Um, well, I mean. Again, this is all kind of dependent on where planning commission is with their comfort level of approving this tonight or pushing it out to another hearing to. Receive back this information for approval at that point. Uh, but of course, anything that they go through there would have to be approved up by the zoning administrator on the under the landscaping plan.
Okay. So planning commissioners, what do you want to do with this information? Do you feel like you have enough? Here that you are ready and comfortable to vote on it? Do you want to, now that we've kind of finalized this list and answered those questions, do we want to give it back to the applicant? And have them finalize everything to bring back to you? What would you like to do? Mr. Bremer?
I'd like to see it come back so we can get all the information we need before finalizing.
Any other thoughts, folks? Mr. Owens?
Uh, I I think that I'm probably comfortable with uh. With approving it as long as the changes are addressed, assuming that Mr. Womack is comfortable that he could handle that from here on out with the guidance that we've given him.
Uh, as you guys always know, I always sit down with Mr. Craig Owens to discuss any final plans, but yeah, that we we would put it through the normal process if that was the way you guys want to do it.
Mr. Conley?
I would be comfortable with moving forward on this today under the same conditions that the other Mr. Owens and Mr. Womack just described.
The other one?
Mr. Harrison Owens.
Okay, well, um. All right, so why don't we? If if you guys have your. Memo for Mr. Johnson. What what we'll do is let me just try to word this as a motion. I I move the approval is granted subject to the following conditions and. So just following along with Mr. Johnson's memo that one and two are. As presented, three with the benches and bike rack being retained, four is as presented. Five is that the facade that we viewed tonight is acceptable. Um, six through ten are as presented. And then we add a number eleven, obtain a parking easement agreement with the Redbird Bistro that's submitted to the city manager. And number twelve to have a landscape plan submitted. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, number thirteen should be to have the plans revised plans submitted to the city zoning administrator for final review and approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Revised plans to the zoning administrator. Okay. All right. So that's my motion.
I second it.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Right, all in favor? I.
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 Oppose, no?
I.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Very much, commissioners.
So that uh. Item B on old business, back to our draft fence ordinance. Mr. Womack, you put a lot of yellow highlighting in this one.
Yeah, so I tried I tried to highlight in yellow any of the changes that I've made since the last time you guys saw this.
Right.
Um, so this mostly deals with the corner lot issue that was kind of the inception of these entire changes. Hopefully you guys all read these recently because I haven't since I wrote it. So, yeah, so basically this would allow the homeowner to designate one of their front. Yards as an accessory, I believe, for a secondary front yard. Uh, but that would only apply to the area that would be in front of the rear or side yard. Uh, so that the area that's between the facade of the home and the public road would not be considered part of that secondary. Uh, front yard. And so a privacy fence would not be permitted between the home facade and the public road. So I I think it fairly encompasses what at least the original requested wanted to do. Now, one of the things that I did. Um, add in here were a couple of diagrams. Share my screen. Right away diagrams, I think, are a little hard for people to understand, so I put some pictures in. Um, now, the the only difficult part, which I'd like some feedback on, is this one here, the five foot side setback between driveways and sidewalks. Um, and of course, this is to prevent somebody from having a privacy fence from a corner lot. But the driveway of a normal lot. Uh, which would then prevent somebody pulling back out of this driveway from seeing, you know, little Susie on her bicycle coming down the sidewalk. So it could create some awkward fence shapes with that kind of corner there. Uh, but I think it's an appropriate safety standard to impose. And then number five here, I highlighted this because currently. Uh, under our animal ordinance, we do not permit. Uh, animals to only have one of those, what do you call them, no CM fences. Uh, so this was part of the draft, I think, the Sparta ordinance. If uh, planning commission wants to allow that, we'd have to go back and address. Um, the requirements in the animal ordinance as well, which is not a big deal. I just need some direction on that. Portion here, appeals of decisions of the zoning administrator shall be by majority vote of the planning commission. I know you guys like to second guess me all the time, and I appreciate the oversight. And then uh. Uh, Ms. Bremer and I did have some back and forth a little bit about a couple of things. Ms. Bremer, do you have your arguments written down better than I can elucidate them, maybe? Um, while she is looking for her notes, the two things I would mention is, and I think we discussed this last time. Uh, were the wrought iron fences with the sharp, I guess, tops. Um, I I'm still opposed to those. Um, maybe Ms. Bremer could better explain that. It it's probably helpful if if you guys understand exactly which type of fences we're looking at. Uh, we're talking about the conic shaped wrought iron ones that are a point at the top. Uh, Ms. Bremer, I did try to Google search these, and almost everyone I could find actually had a little ball on the top. Uh, to blunt them, so they were not sharp. Um, so I'm opposed to that still, but Ms. Bremer, I think you did have a very good point regarding agricultural fencing. Uh, so for the planning commission at large, Ms. Bremer indicated to me that she felt that we should allow agricultural fencing. Um, in some regards, and I think the point was surrounding garden beds. Is that accurate, Ms. Bremer?
Yes.
Okay, so the only difficulty I have with allowing that, of course, is. I would need a good definition for where we would permit them or not. Ms. Bremer, I put some more thought into it. Because my concern is if we say perimeter fencing only. Uh, you're going to have someone say, well, if I move it two in feet, two feet in from the perimeter, therefore it's no longer perimeter fencing. Uh, we might be better off putting some language in there, saying something along the lines of. Um, agricultural fencing can be used to enclose an area of one hundred square feet or less, something like that. Um, Mr. Johnson, do you have any thoughts or language regarding agricultural fencing around flower beds or? Mr. Johnson, do you have any thoughts or language regarding agricultural fencing around flower beds or garden beds?
No, not right now.
Ms. Bremer, have you put more thought into it?
I might put some more thought into it. I do have some other comments on it when when you're done talking.
Okay. Ms. Bremer, do you have further thoughts about maybe we could better define agricultural fencing?
Well, 100 square feet wouldn't make much of a garden.
Well, I'm not much of a gardener, so I guess that's that's why I'm asking what what other language we could use. Just because I think it's a bit nebulous using the terminology perimeter fence.
Well, what I was saying was that you shouldn't use that type of thing for a boundary fence of the perimeter is the is a perimeter goes around a property on the property line.
Well, sure, I know that. And I understand what point you're getting at. But as I indicated before, what do I say to the homeowner who says, well, I moved my fence two feet in from the property line, now I can put up chicken wire?
Whatever.
I think it's a serious point.
I do, too. And I think that we're limiting people too much.
Ms. Bremer, is it your argument, then, that we should allow agricultural type fencing, chicken wire to be used anywhere on somebody's property?
I would consider that sarcasm.
I'm dead serious right now.
No, you're not. You've done this before.
Okay.
And I don't appreciate it.
Well, I think you're looking a little bit too much into things.
No, I'm not.
Ms. Bremer, I don't know how I can explain to you that I'm being serious, other than saying I'm being very serious. The question is, if we're going to define this, how do we define it in such a way other than simply using the word perimeter? Because I think it's an argument. And of course, I'm I deal with these people every day. If they move it two feet in from the property line, I think that defeats what you're using the word perimeter. Am I talking crazy? Is everybody kind of understanding what I'm saying here?
I have a question for Mr. Womack.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you aware, I'm not aware, do we have any regulations concerning how large a garden can be within city limits?
I'm not aware of any, no.
Because I think that maybe that could be a good place to start for if if we did have something like that, that could be a good number to look at in terms of total square footage for allowing this kind of fencing.
Well, and so, Mr. Owens, now that you're bringing it up, some things I would I would think is, well, okay, so now somebody has a garden bed in the front yard, which we do have a number of people that gardens in the front yard. Would we allow them to enclose their front yard with a chicken wire fence?
I would think not. I'm more looking for solutions in terms of finding an appropriate number of square feet. You know, Ms. Bremer indicated that she didn't think 100 square feet was good enough for a garden. I am also not a gardener, so I'm just looking for solutions, maybe to find a good number to indicate the total square footage that we would allow this, you know, obviously in a in a backyard kind of setting.
I'm open to any thoughts or questions or comments on that point. Yeah, I'm certainly, Ms. Bremer, I'm certainly not opposed, and I appreciate you bringing up the idea of enclosing a garden with chicken wire fence. My only concern is coming up with appropriate language and definitions that would prevent somebody from using chicken wire or other agricultural type fencing to either create a boundary line, a perimeter line, as you've indicated, and also not to, I guess, use too much of it, for lack of a better term.
Mr. Johnson?
You could require that any any fencing used to enclose a garden or similar similar thing on a property must be located in the rear yard and would have to meet setback requirements for accessory buildings. That way they wouldn't couldn't put it on the property line. They'd have to be set in from the property line, three or four feet, whatever the accessory building setback is, and they'd have to be in the rear yard. But I definitely wouldn't try to limit the area that someone could have for a garden. Could be a doesn't matter.
Ms. Bremer?
If you if you say they have to be only in the rear yard, what about people with really big side yards?
I think rear inside is appropriate.
You could do that, yeah.
Ms. Bremer, is that language acceptable to you regarding your thought process on agricultural fencing?
I think you were muted, Mr. Bremer.
It's fine.
Okay, so if planning commission has, I mean, we could talk about this more if you want, but I will draft up some language regarding agricultural fencing needing those standards. Mr. Owens, do you think we've talked this one to death? Do you think any commission members have other thoughts regarding any other aspect of the ordinance?
Mr. McGrath? I think you're muted.
We take the screen share down.
Okay, sorry about that.
There you go.
Just the fencing, I'm actually kind of in favor of the electric underground fencing for animals. What you said wasn't a big deal. So I don't know how the other committee members feel about it, but I'm in favor of not making that a or making that possible for dog owners.
Mr. Watson?
I'm in favor of invisible fences underground because as a dog owner and having seen how many dogs run into the street at random despite their owners being outside, I think it's a good idea, especially within the city limits with as much traffic as we have going.
Technically, sorry, technically, they shouldn't have any of their animals off leash anyways. But of course, you're right, this might present a better option for somebody or cheaper alternative, perhaps. Or to keep a cleaner front yard. So if, Mr. Owens, if you think it's appropriate, I can draft some additional language regarding invisible fences and figure out a way to make that work well with our animal ordinance as well.
Sure. Ms. Owens, did you have something else to add on that, or?
I was just going to echo my support. I think invisible fences don't do anything to detract from the overall looking character of the city in any way, since by the nature of their name, they are invisible.
All right. So you're going to draft some more on this?
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
All right. All right. New business. Return to Agromed. Is that letter A? Yes. I believe that there was, Mr. Johnson, you correct me on this, but I think the stuff that you pointed out to us back in our public hearing, that we're still awaiting quite a few more items for you to give us a adequate review of this, right?
Or Agromed, you mean?
Yes.
Well, I think they've made progress in giving us information that we've asked for. The problem is, I didn't get it until some of it today and some of it last Thursday or Friday. And I simply, you know, couldn't move that to the top of my list. I had other clients to attend to, and I haven't had a chance to adequately review it. So and maybe you haven't either. So I don't ready, I don't think it's ready to be voted on at this point in time.
Mr. Owens, I 100% agree with it. Of course, I know Agromed and Mr. Mackey, and I know they're doing an excellent job. The problem is, we have cut off dates for submission of materials for a reason. And bless all the concerns. I know they want to get their projects underway. I know they are getting feedback, and they immediately want to turn around and fix it. But as Mr. Johnson indicated, I had a hard time keeping up with some of this stuff. And I know that the planning commission members get their information from me and Mr. Johnson. And feel free to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but, Mr. Owens, I don't feel like the planning commission members had sufficient time to review this. I certainly didn't. And I'd like to see Mr. Johnson's thorough review. I believe Mr. Johnson gave a pretty good review as it is, and it should lead Mr. Mackey and Agromed to submitting some very good site plans for next meeting. But at this time, I agree, I don't think this is sufficient to be voted on.
So I make a motion that we table this until we have a more complete report.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of tabling? Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. No. Okay. Right. And then Battle Springs doing business as 315 cannabis. I believe we're kind of in the same position with this one. We're still awaiting a lot of information here.
Agreed. Mr. Is I'm sure Mr. Johnson agreed with me as well. This is all a bit of a learning curve. And of course, this is no different than we get from most proposed businesses. I think a lot of businesses propose what they want. They may see what the planning commission wants, and then usually by the second meeting, we're able to come to an agreement. But same thing, they were submitting paperwork up until the last minute. I just didn't have time to read it, write a report for it. And I believe Mr. Johnson was in the same position.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we table the Battle Springs LLC DBA 315 cannabis application until we have a more complete report. Second. I have support for that. Any discussion? All in favor of tabling? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Motion carries on that. Thank you. Correspondence, Mr. Womack, anything for you to share with us?
No, I will comment. No, I have a city manager comment. I'll reserve my comments for that.
Okay, well, if we don't have any correspondence, we'll move to the city manager comment.
Sorry. So I wanted to thank planning commission members. This is very difficult work. You guys are put into a very difficult position. I know that not everybody agrees personally with marijuana or marijuana businesses. But, you know, beyond that, of course, I've said this 100 times, even stuff like this fence ordinance. It's complicated. I know you're going to make some people happy and some people upset. It is what it is. You guys do an excellent job every week. I appreciate it. And, Mr. Harrison Owens, I'm not going to steal your thunder, but I appreciate the time that you've served with us. And I'm sad to see you go. If that's still a go, can I convince you to stay, maybe?
If you can find me a house here and within city limits, I'd be happy to stay.
So as Mr. Harrison has tipped everybody off, he'll be leaving us here. I believe he said his October meeting would be the last. And I thank him for his service. Other than that, good work, everybody. I appreciate your time and effort, and I'll work on this fence ordinance.
What about any comments, first of all, about the clerk? Everything going well with her?
She did bring her baby in to meet with staff, if you want to put it that way, the other day. Cute baby. Very well behaved, very sleepy when I got to see her. Kinsley, I think her name was. Chandel, correct me if I'm wrong on that. And of course, Chandel's been serving very well as deputy clerk. She got through the election just fine, no complaints, no problems, everything lined up and all the numbers matched. So everything's great on that account as well. Chandel, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay. Planning commission members, any comments from you? Okay. Mr. Hall, since you were able to join us, you want to give us a the city council, as a city council representative, your report?
Thank you, one and all, for being here this evening. I know there's some tough decisions to be made, and hopefully we can come together and make it a better community. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Owens. Harrison, that's all.
Mr. Johnson, you got anything else for us?
I do not.
Okay. Make a motion for us to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.